All right, we'll call this meeting to order. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everyone. Al, can you start us off with roll call, please?
Okay, and this is roll call for the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting of March 8th, 2021. Benson?
Benson here.
Benson is present. Brunick?
Brunick here.
Brunick is present. Sarda?
Sarda here.
Sarda is present. Mybaum?
Mybaum is present.
Mybaum is present. Minor?
Minor present.
Minor is present. Moser?
Moser here.
Moser is present. Shram?
Shram here.
Shram is present. Weber?
Weber is present.
Weber is present. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson is present.
Johnson is present. City Manager Leon?
Leon is here.
City Manager Leon is present. City Attorney Denherter?
Denherter is here.
City Attorney Denherter is present.
You have before you the minutes of the work session meeting of February 22nd, as well as the regular meeting of February 22nd. What is your pleasure?
Weber moves.
Brunick second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion about the minutes? Al, roll call, please. Al, are you in mute?
I sure am. How come nobody's answering? Again, this is roll call of the minutes. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Approval of the minutes passes nine zero.
You have before you the scheduled bills. What is your pleasure?
I'll move it. Oh. I'll make a motion, Moser.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion about the bills? We have no one here in the audience tonight, so I will ask Dave Mingo. Any comments on YouTube?
There are no comments on YouTube.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call on the schedule of bills. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Excuse me. Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Scheduled bills passes nine zero.
City Manager's report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Commission. Just a couple of things this evening for you, and then if you have questions to me, I'm happy to address them. Absentee voting for the City Commission election will begin on March 22nd. We're allowed to open that up a little bit earlier, so Lisa Yardley and Al and I have discussed that. So that's available to people as early as March 22nd. Folks do need to register to vote if they're not registered. And people can also come to one of the polling places, of course, the day of the municipal election. So more information will be put out on that. When we have a sample ballot, we will put that up on our website so people can see what that will look like. Again, election Tuesday, April 13th. Later this evening on your consent calendar, you have a work session scheduled. I'd ask that you schedule that. I don't have a topic yet. Staff and I are still working that out. So if you are wondering what that is, I am too at the moment, but we'll bring that to you as soon as we have information on what we're going to present. We did have some vandalism, both to private and public property over the course of, not this weekend, but the previous weekend. I told you a little bit about that. Commander Brown has indicated that they are working on some leads that they have on that. There were vehicles and property damage, as well as vandalism to some of our public property down at the water treatment plant. So we are working on that. That tends to happen as weather warms, but hopefully, hopefully with the increased presence of patrol and getting the word out that people are looking out for their neighborhoods, we can make sure that that is limited or doesn't exist in our community. Also with the warm weather, we have a couple of things to address. A lot of questions about restrooms and water in the parks. So I know that it's really nice and everyone got out and used the parks. And people, when they use the parks, need to use their washroom and want to drink water. We do not turn on our water or open our restrooms until we have sustained temperatures above freezing. And I'd like to tell you that every weekend will be like this weekend, but it sounds like even later this week, we're going to have some cooler temperatures. So it should be a while probably before those are open permanently. However, as you know, we do have a three-season bathroom at Riverside Park near the baseball stadium. We also have the year-round restroom now by the water treatment plant. And in the new aquatics facility, we have planned for a year-round family-type restroom as well. So you know, while there won't be full restrooms available all year round, there will always be at least one in the future. So as we make improvements to parks, that's another thing that we'll encourage the commission to consider is the year-round facilities, because people tend to utilize the parks year-round, and when they use them, they need to use the facilities as well. So that's information on that. Also, as soon as the first nice day occurs, we have people putting things out for citywide cleanup. And it's way too early for that, friends of Yankton. So please, put that stuff back in your garage or wherever it came from until we are ready for citywide cleanup, which is, I believe, we're starting a little bit later this year, April 19th. So we're well over a month here. If you do put things out on your curb, one of our friendly folks from Community Development will probably contact you and encourage you to put it somewhere else for the time being. Our transfer station is open. If you're really excited to get things cleaned up, you can take your things out there. However, you know, there is a charge for that. So just please, people will hold off until our citywide cleanup event. There's information on our website about that as well. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll let you get to your business.
Any questions for the City Manager? Okay, then we will move on to public appearances. This is a time when members of the audience can address the commission about items not on tonight's agenda. Considering that we have no one here in the audience, there will be short work of that item. Dave, any comments on YouTube that we need to be aware of?
There are no comments.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to the consent item agenda. Number one is the work session, which the City Manager just addressed. That'll be on March 22nd at 6:00 PM in the commission chambers. Number two is Consideration Memorandum 21-44 recommending approval of the mayor's appointments to Consolidated Board of Equalization. And this is the fun time of year where we seek volunteers from the commission to serve on that board. Do we have two people, or excuse me, three, and an alternate? Mason? There's one. It's interesting. It's always interesting. Again, this will be Friday, April 23rd, is when we anticipate the first Board of Equalization will take place. Usually the last, too, and those usually occur at noon. Bridgette? Okay. Mason and Bridgette, anyone else want to volunteer now, or do we twist your arms later? Dave, Sarda, this is your last opportunity. Yeah, it is. All right, well, we got, we have two, so we need a third, and we usually appoint an alternate. So take a look at your calendars. Again, April, Friday, April 23rd is when we anticipate this will take place, starting over the noon hour.
Al, this is Amy.
I would just say that I have served for, both as an active participant and then as an alternate. So unless there's others who haven't served in either capacity before, I volunteer myself.
I have, I have not served, so I can, I think I can do that every year.
Okay, so you want to be number three and Tony will be the alternate? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Okay, I think we'll all agree. It's a learning experience, and it really opens your eyes to how that element of our government works. Not a lot of people take the time to have a front row seat to that. All right. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to old business, and number one is the Health Board update, so I'll let the City Manager do that.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Commission. Want to first go over the metrics that the Health Board looked at today. I don't know if, Duane, you're able to pull those up? Otherwise, if you could maybe share your screen with, or ask Dave to share a screen. I'm not logged into the meeting, or I can log into the meeting quickly. Sorry to put you on the spot there. I'll talk about a couple of the, I guess, the less ex- I'll talk about the small, what I call the smaller of the three goals, which is the hospitalization rate. This week, we, it's been reported today by Ever Sacred Heart, they have one COVID-positive hospitalization. So that is, is, still, we're still at our chief goal of less than three or less for three consecutive weeks, so that's very good. Our case numbers have risen slightly. We were hovering around the 35 positive case number mark for a while, and we've gone up a little bit to 40. So you know, that's gone up a bit, but not terrible. So still keeping an eye on that. So according to the criteria we set, that's, that's not yet at our goal where we achieve. Thank you, Duane. But most interesting, I think, is to look at our vaccination cheerio, is what I, what I call it, and the number of people that have received vaccinations. So the orange swath there is two doses, so full course of vaccine, around 18% of our population in the county has received that. And then 11%, the blue area, has received one dose. So we're slowly creeping forward to a higher vaccination rate. We're still 71% not vaccinated. We think that number is a little low for a couple reasons. This is what the state is reporting out to, on their website, to us on their website. We do not believe that this includes the information from the federal vaccination program that the state is receiving. So the state is receiving information from, say, Hy-Vee or other private pharmacies that are part of the federal vaccination program, but we don't believe those are being reported back through to the state, the county, at a county level. So they may be reflective in the state number, but they don't, aren't not probably reflective in the county number. We'll continue to work on that. But we wanted to err on the side of being conservative, so this would be the conservative side. So it's probably a little better than that on that number. We know that the federal vaccination program is taking place, and they're vaccinating people now in that 65 and older, or six, or under 18 to 65 with health conditions already. So same would be for folks that are accessing the vaccine through an Indian health service or, you know, a reserve, a service on the, on one of the reservations. Those are reported federally to the state, but probably aren't reflective here in our numbers. So we're thinking our numbers are going to be a little bit better, so we like that. We want to see that continue to grow, the colors continue to grow on that circle as we move forward. So we'll be giving weekly updates on that. The Health Board also would like to remind everybody that there is some new guidelines from the CDC. We put those on our Facebook page at the city, and I'm sure many people are looking at those. They are sort of new guidelines for people who have been fully vaccinated and gone through their full course of vaccination. I don't think there are anything that anybody didn't think of, so they're not complicated, but they are sort of broken down for personal, I guess, socialization more. They're not really, they don't really answer technical questions about the workplace, or technical questions about, you know, that you may have in certain facilities. So we'll be waiting for more and more guidance from the CDC. But it does give some general good guidelines for people to take a look at. Still not recommending unnecessary travel or large group congregations indoors. So take a look at those. The public should take a look at those. We'll continue to share what we know when we know it and continue to promote use and vaccination. Also, another note, some folks have indicated that they just don't understand how to access vaccine, how to sign up for vaccine, if they don't have the technology, what have you. Our folks at the library are working with people at both the private pharmacy, as well as with Avera, and can help people connect and help people sign up if they need that help. So that would be one source if people are just lost as to how they can get signed up, so. But no recommendations for you from the Health Board, so we're not asking for any action by you, but I'm happy to answer questions if the commission has them.
Amy, I'll add that this week, Ever Sacred Heart's allocation of vaccine is 840 doses, which is much larger than usual. And that's aimed at really making a dent in the 65 and above crowd, as well as those with one underlying condition. So we hope to have a lot of those people done by the end of this week. It was announced today that teachers beginning today can start receiving vaccinations. The state announced that. So Avera will begin scheduling those teachers. However, as Amy alluded to, Avera gets its allocation from the state, whereas the pharmacies are getting their allocation from the federal government. And the federal government has said that pharmacies can go ahead and start giving vaccine to teachers. So if you hear of some confusion out there, that's why. So all in all, great news that vaccine keeps pouring in, and we'll keep moving down the priority list. Any questions before we move on? Okay. Next, under Old Business, is number two, Consideration Memorandum 21-40 regarding the request for a special events retail on-sale liquor license for April 24th from the Elks Lodge, and this would be for an event at the National Field Archery Association at 800 Archery Lane. What is your pleasure?
Weber moves.
Brunick, second.
Minor.
We've got a motion and a second, and another half a motion. Any commission discussion? Again, there's no one in the audience. Dave, anyone on YouTube?
I have no YouTube comments.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call on Old Business Item 3-2. Weber?
Weber votes aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Old Business Item 3-2 passes nine zero.
Number three under Old Business is a public hearing regarding the state revolving fund application for the wastewater plant project, as well as a project update. Does Kyle plan to present to us here?
Yes, good evening, Commission. Honorable Mayor Johnson. I'll start off kind of by apologizing. This is basically the same presentation that you saw here about a month ago. What has changed is inflation and material costs. As we continue to work through this process, the EDAs voice some concerns about what they're seeing, some bids coming in on projects. They're seeing anywhere from 12 to 15% increase on projects on average. So what we're looking at is amending our current SRF application to kind of try to cover those additional increases that we think we're probably going to see based on the inflation. So we have to go through the public hearing process again. So again, this is the public hearing for the wastewater treatment and collection improvements. Again, project location is at the wastewater treatment plant. There are several projects, I think about 10 projects within the wastewater treatment plant that we're looking at. The other location is a manhole replacement along Hastings Drive, where we had some underwater manholes and some major infiltration during the flood. Project purpose and need. Again, we're, we're looking at some infrastructure issues we had during the flood, system weaknesses, and some needs for some strengthening of our overall system. We're looking at service failures, the need for essential capacity building, economic vulnerability, and need for anticipatory measures. We had some industries that we were asking to shut down during that event, and that's never good. And then just some operational shortcomings and the need for some analysis and planning, and that's our GIS and our question system modeling and master planning. And the projects are basically, or I shouldn't say basically, the projects have stayed the same. Replaced electrical switchgear at the plant. That's our dual feed, the switchgear for our dual feed. Reducing single points of failures to buildings within the plant, and that's just running dual feeds to each building that's, that's considered a critical building. Generator for effluent pumping, and the generator, generator will also be used at some of our facilities outside the plant, lift stations, booster stations, pre-treatment building, influent screen improvements, replacement of the aeration pumps with some dry pit submersibles, getting a lot of some capacity to the system also. Equalization basin that gives us the opportunity to bypass some of those higher flows out to, to our lagoons, to a new basin, and then bring that water back later in time when it's, works better. Repair and service our bypass gates that failed during the flood. Replace the influent pipe going into our aeration building. Replace the inflow pipe that comes out in front of the street department and goes into the wastewater treatment plant, to the headworks. Purchase a new bypass, portable six-inch pump, the manholes at the Hastings Lift Station out there, and some additional planning documents. Again, that's our GIS and collection system master planning. As part of the facility plan, we have to look at alternatives, because most of these projects are improvements to service failures. There's not a lot of alternatives to look at. We will look at some value engineering in terms of materials and things like that to try to help keep us on budget. We did look at, evaluate the equalization base and options. We're looking, and it was recommended to use the earth burn basin out at our current lagoons. We have looked at a smaller concrete basin to utilize for daily operation, to take some water out there during our peak flows and bring it back at night when we have lower flows. With the budget restraints, I'm not sure that's going to be an option, but we will continue to look at it. Project costs, again, we're looking at about, you know, an $8 million project toll. So when you start looking at, you know, 12, 15% increases, you're looking at a pretty substantial amount of money compared to our original cost estimates that were part of the application. Proposed financing for the project, again, our current rates, the $6, 00 cents per thousand gallons, the $11.22 fixed charge. For this project, we don't have any increase in rates directly tied to the project, or to this funding application. Again, I would caution that, that doesn't mean we may not have to have future, or we will need future increases, but they're not directly tied to this project or the funding application. What has changed here is our SRF loan. We upped that from 3.5 million to 4.5 million, basically additional million dollars. Again, it's 2% for 20 years is the rate. We, if we do not use the money, we do not have to take the money, and there's no, no issues with that. There's no penalties or fines if we do not borrow the entire 4.5 billion. So it does just give us a little bit of cushion to cover those expected overages that we're seeing on inflation right now. Project schedule stays the same. One of the things we are looking at because of the construction costs is maybe holding off on some of our planning documents, our GIS data collection and master planning and modeling, and kind of waiting to see where those construction contracts come in in terms of inflation costs. Environmental considerations. We do social environmental analysis as part of the facilities plan. No major impacts to flood plains, wetlands, endangered species, or anything like that. We do anticipate, of course, some temporary impacts, because it is a construction project. Every time you have construction, you have some noise. You'll have air quality. Anytime you have that much exposed dirt, you'll have some dust and things like that. So there will be some, some temporary impacts during the project. The last slide here that I did add this time was some EDA's project considerations. As part of the application, we had to turn in a preliminary engineering report that covered all these projects. Based on that preliminary engineering report, we are required to complete all those projects per that preliminary engineering report. So you know, we're kind of tied to what was in that report. Any of those costs over just because of inflation are the responsibility of the city. Again, EDA has voiced some concerns about the recent inflation that they're seeing in the projects that have been coming in lately. They have advised the city of several options in anticipation of those increased project costs. One of the things we've looked at is the development of the, of the master plan and GIS and modeling. Those are not considered a professional service. So to use the EDA funding source for those projects, we have to put together a scope that can be basically competitively bid. And the issue with that is, is once we put together that scope, it's, it's pretty much like the preliminary engineering report. What's in that scope has to be completed. If it's not in the scope, it won't be funded. So we have some concerns with that right now in terms of not kind of knowing where those construction costs are going to come in. One of the options that EDA has given us is to take that money that was put, that was going to be put towards the GIS modeling and master plans and roll that into construction and use our own funds to complete the modeling and the master plans. That gives us a little bit more flexibility in terms of not having to put together that competitive process, the scope for that competitive process can maybe leave us some better options to manage those project costs as we move forward. So that's something we're still looking at with, with EDA. Again, SRF funds could be used to, to cover those overages. And again, that's why we're amending the, the SRF for the additional $1 million. Again, if we don't use the money, there's no fines or additional costs related to that. We just won't borrow that. We just won't borrow that amount. So that's kind of where we're at. Again, it's pretty much the same thing as last time, only with additional funding to cover those overages. And again, now with the latest natural disaster, with the deep freeze going all the way into Texas, we're seeing some additional material costs, inflation there too, with some of the copper pipes and plastic pipes and things like that. So just trying to stay ahead of things right now as they change, and it's kind of unpredictable right now. So.
Questions?
Thanks for that update, Kyle, and thanks for your work to keep us ahead of all the challenges that are out there. Commission, any questions? Seems like we've been talking about this project at every meeting for the last couple months, because we have been. But it's great that we're going to get this assistance to do this upgrade. There are no commission questions? There's no one in the audience here. Dave, any comments on YouTube?
We had a brief outage of YouTube viewing, but we're back on and there are no comments.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll do roll call.
I believe we need a motion and a second first, please.
We could use a motion and a second. Can we get one? Does anyone want to offer one?
Shram, so moved.
Benson second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? All right, Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call to approve the application for the SRF for the wastewater plant project. And that's Old Business Item 3-3. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybomb?
Mybomb is aye.
Mybomb is aye. Minor?
Minor aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Old Business Item 3-3 passes 9-0.
Onto new business. Number one is Consideration Memorandum 21-41 and Resolution 21-19 regarding a mower purchase for the Parks Department. This would be at a cost of $13,800 when we figure in a trade-in. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Moser.
Shram second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Dave, any comments on YouTube?
There are no YouTube comments.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-1. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybomb?
Mybomb is aye.
Mybomb is aye. Minor?
Minor aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New Business Item 4-1 passes 9-0.
Number two under new business is Consideration Memorandum 21-42 and Resolution 21-20 regarding a mower purchase for the cemetery. This will be at a cost of $9,490 with a trade-in. What is your pleasure?
Weber moves.
Brunick second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item?
This is Commissioner Mybomb. I guess this would be a question maybe for Al. So this is a purchase of a mower for the cemetery. And I guess essentially the Park and Recs Department is the steward for our city cemetery. But we do have an option as the City Commission to fund this type of a purchase for maintaining the cemetery through the Perpetual Care Fund that was also set aside for the city cemetery. Can you maybe give us a little bit of insight into that, perhaps as an option in this case? And I would assume that the balance is still the same. At least last I checked, it has been unchanged for the last 10, 12 years, I guess as far back as I can go into some of the budget documents. But I just appreciate a little bit of insight into that before paying for this right away out of the Park and Recs budget this year.
For a little bit of an update, yes, we do have a perpetual care fund. I don't have the number right in front of me, but it is unchanged. And I believe it's right around 56,000 plus change. That perpetual care fund is set up by codified law to be used for any kind of operation of the cemetery, including capital purchases. We've had some discussions in the past. So far, the commission decisions have been not to dip into that, but it certainly is available. I would suggest that if we're going to look at that, we still approve this purchase and then we, you know, basically it's coming out of the pot of money that we could pay it ahead of time and still decide at a future meeting so that we have the public discussion and commissions voting in on it too, or weighing in on a vote. So I would certainly answer any more questions tonight, but I'd ask that you approve the purchase so that we can go forward with that. And if you want this on a future agenda to take it out of the perpetual care fund, we'll certainly do that. And that can be as soon as the next meeting already. So.
Now, this is Commissioner Mybomb again, I think, and again, to your point about it, the rules regarding this are in statutory law. And so even if we were to fund this purchase through the perpetual care fund, it is the type of, you know, 5,000-plus action that we could take that would even require an extra reading, I think. Is that right?
It doesn't even require an extra reading, other than since the commission has taken a stance in the past not to dip into that. I'd rather see that as a public agenda item where at least five of you agree at a meeting to use those funds. Either way, like I said, we could still move forward with the purchase and have it at a future meeting, and it could be as soon as the next meeting. So I just, since we've not had a commission that chose to take it out of there, I'd rather see that be a commission vote.
This is Commissioner Mybomb. Yeah, I don't disagree. I think it's a worthwhile conversation that we should have as a commission at some point, perhaps as soon as the next City Commission meeting. And I suppose just, if anything, just to consider the optics of the fact that we've had so much of, call it taxpayers' funds, just sitting there, not accumulating much in interest, and to what end? If it's for the peace of mind of folks, I guess. I certainly think that the city of Yankton has been an excellent steward for the cemetery. And that being said, I think we also have to balance the fact that as city commissioners, we also have to be good stewards of taxpayers' monies as well. And so, yeah, I certainly don't disagree. It makes sense to have this payment proceed. But just to the larger question again, because I know this got brought up at one of the last budget meetings last year, and that was setting up a perpetual care fund for the Huether Family Aquatics Facility that's going to be opening up here again. So maybe to help even set expectations for what that means, if we're setting aside monies for some particular purpose, that we can be as open as possible as to why we're not expending those dollars if in fact they could be better off in our citizens' pockets instead. We've got some uncertainties still this year, and particularly in the Park and Recs Department, we've got a pretty big grand opening that we're all looking forward to. But food for thought, if anything. And so I don't know if there's other commissioners who'd be interested in seeing this on a future agenda where we could talk about it a little bit more, and like Al said, even retroactively compensate, I suppose compensate back then to the Park and Recs Department. I think it'd be a worthwhile conversation to have.
And that gives me also the opportunity to update that number and show you once again the code that does allow spending that, if that's what you choose to do. So. Any other commission concerns or suggestions?
If there's no further commission discussion, last call. Then I will, again, there's no one in the audience. So Dave, any comments on YouTube?
There are no YouTube comments.
Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call for new business item 4-2. Sarda?
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybomb?
Mybomb is aye.
Mybomb is aye. Minor?
Minor aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New Business Item 4-2 passes 9-0.
Number three under new business is Consideration Memorandum 21-43 regarding a vehicle purchase for the Parks Department. This would be at a cost of $31,874. What is your pleasure?
Benson so moved.
Shram second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? There's still no one in the audience. So Dave, any comments on YouTube?
No comments on YouTube.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call on new business item 4-3. Mybomb?
Mybomb is aye.
Mybomb is aye. Minor?
Minor aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New Business Item 4-3 passes 9-0.
And number four under new business is the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1048, which establishes March 22nd as the date of the second reading and public hearing for a kennel ordinance. Can I get an introduction?
Shram introduced.
Thank you. And Ross, for the public's benefit, can you describe what we're proposing here?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, over the last several years, city staff in my office have received a number of complaints from citizens regarding unsanitary conditions of certain businesses or nonprofits that house animals. Poor animal friends can't speak for themselves. So we've had to kind of take a hard look at what tools we have in our toolbox to address this kind of thing. And ultimately, we determined that we already have a kennel ordinance that requires licensure of kennels, but it didn't really do anything other than collect a nominal fee every year. So it seemed like the best way to address the problem was to just put a little care and structure into our kennel licensing that provides a minimum requirement to clean and care for the animals in a sanitary way. So essentially, we started with an adjustment to the types of entities that are affected by the ordinance. It includes any location in the city where four or more adult dogs or six or more adult domesticated animals of any species are kept during the calendar year for the purposes of sale to the public in association with a nonprofit or for-profit enterprise, including professional breeding, boarding facilities, pet daycare facilities, pet sitting and pet stores, animals kept for exhibition, trading animals for a fee or in association with an animal rescue. That's a broadening of the definition. It encompasses, at this time, still just a small number of operations in Yankton. We also made it clear that it does not encompass dog grooming salons that are not offering any of those other types of services, including breeding, boarding facilities, pet daycare, pet sitting, et cetera. And it also excludes in-home pet grooming and pet sitting. So I hope that puts some folks' minds at ease. It does require an annual inspection. There's a little bit more in-depth application process, but the goal is just maintaining minimum levels of sanitation and cleanliness for the safety of the animals. The facility standards do require someone from the city to come in and inspect upon complaint as well. So if we do get complaints, we have a tool to use to check up on our licensed facilities. And there is a process to remove a license if a facility operator has dropped below the minimum standards without correcting the problem. So it's a better licensure procedure. It's meaningful now. One thing it does require this commission to do, if this commission is inclined to approve the ordinance at the second reading, you guys will need to consider a resolution to establish a fee. I think the annual fee right now is only something like $5. Yeah, I think we ought to adjust it to a rate at least sufficient to cover an annual inspection of sorts, which isn't a terrible cost, but something we ought to be mindful of. So we'll have a resolution for you guys to consider at the next meeting also.
Before I turn it over to commission discussion, I think it's important to note that you did mail out these proposed changes to facilities that would be impacted by it, and you've heard no feedback up to this point?
I did mail them out. I heard from one of our local establishment, the Red Hydrant, I believe, is the name of that facility. And we've spoken with the owners, the operators of that facility, and they're comfortable with this framework. They believe that they meet all the minimum requirements. I have not heard from any of the others.
Thank you. Any other commission discussion or questions? Thank you for your work on that, Ross, and the rest of city staff. I know it's been something on our radar for a while. So there's no other business on tonight's agenda. I would request a motion to adjourn.
Benson so moved.
Moser second.
We've got a motion and a second. Al, roll call, please.
Find my mic button there. Okay, and this is roll call on the adjournment of the March 8th City Commission meeting. Minor?
Minor aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybomb?
Mybomb is aye.
Mybomb is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Adjournment passes 9-0.
This meeting is adjourned. Take care, everyone.